Portage County Board of Supervisors meeting, recorded October 4th, 2022.
It's five o'clock. We'll call the Portage County Board to order. Roll call.
We have 22 supervisors present. Supervisor Lattick is remote, and we have two supervisors excused, Supervisor Jakowski, District 22, and Supervisor Sislevich.
Pledge to the flag? What's that?
The sound is messed up.
It's a reverberation or something.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation is by Supervisor Shabelski?
As we gather this evening to do the business of our neighbors, please let us remember our duty to all members of this community and to be thankful for the opportunity we have here in this room to work together to make our home a better place. May we continue to be mindful of all those who work to keep us safe, those who keep roads, administration, and resources running smoothly, those that provide vital services that many never think of, and those that serve and comfort the frail and less fortunate members of our community. In this spirit of service and cooperation, let us work together here tonight to continue building a foundation upon which our county will grow, prosper, and most importantly, be a place we can hand to our children and grandchildren with pride. Thank you.
Approval of September 20, 2022 minutes. Motion by Supervisor Dubek. Seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Discussion or changes? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Correspondents?
Number three, upcoming county board meeting dates and information. This is updated. It includes now the October 25th meeting date. Number four, Wisconsin County's Association Forward Analytics moving in, exploring Wisconsin's migration challenges.
I have just two other things. You have next week's board agenda. Is that your desk? Remind everybody that next Tuesday, we're back here again, same time, same place. And there will be an email going out for, especially for some of the other supervisors about a Christmas party. We used to have a Christmas party or a gathering with staff and supervisors, and with the pandemic, it had been postponed. And now we're trying to get back to normal. So I see the sheriff smiling. He's happy. So we've got a questionnaire going out to people, what they're interested in and the different venue, because that has changed as well. So watch for that, please.
Presentation. We have County Executive Pavelski, State of the County Address, and Budget Presentation.
Thank you, Sheriff Haga, county supervisors, elected officials, colleagues, and citizens. Portage County is the heart of Wisconsin, known for educational excellence, our recreational beauty, and natural resources, our agricultural sector with the stewardship fruitfulness and bounty that feeds the world, and our industries and commerce that supplies the goods and services that keep the economic machine running smoothly. It all adds up to community that I'm proud to be a part of within a country that is the greatest in the world. Not that it doesn't have its challenges, which we're about to go over shortly, but as long as we continue to support the foundational principles upon which this country was founded upon: faith, perseverance, sacrifice, integrity, courage, wisdom, compassion, loyalty, mercy, beauty, and a host of others, which are all nothing but the characters of God. And basically, our decisions with money determine what we value. Today, we're going to go over a budget on how we're going to spend our money. So I have you just consider that. First slide, what I want to show you, we're talking about our budget, we're talking about levy. And this year's levy is basically, you know, to about 2.5 million above what was last year. You've got several categories, the operating levy, the health care center levy, the debt service levy, the countywide levy, the bridge and budget levy, and the property tax chargeback. There's the categories right there as far as each of the individual amounts. Basically, it shows what the tax rate is, 4.88, which is basically less than last year's tax rate, which was 5.03. This just shows some historical data of basically what that tax rate means to us. That a median home value last year in 2022 was at 168,100. This year is up like 6.2% to 178,600. Even though the levy went down, the, actually, your tax bill for an average median household of 178,600, based on economic value, actually is going to go up 26 bucks. Did you catch all that, Joan?
Just about.
Okay, sorry about that. I meant to ask you before I began.
Thank you.
If there's any questions around my presentation, please let me know. Okay, here's some of the budget assumptions that we take a look at when we start making up the entire budget. The healthcare center budget reflects the operating costs that requires the use of additional tax levy in the amount of 2,885,449. The county may increase its levy by referendum passed in 2022 up to 4.5 million. And those additional tax levies doesn't sunset till 2042. So this is basically just the levy that's going to take care of the operational costs for next year, depending whether we determine to build a building, then we can levy more and attribute to those costs and build a building, which would basically start in 2024. The county bridge levy increases by 775,000 over the previous year to accommodate six bridges and culverts and projects of the upcoming year, including design, construction, and oversight costs. Basically, the bridge levy is any town or the village of Rushell can require a construction project. They have to fund 50% of it, and the county has to fund the other 50% through levy. So that's what that whole levy is about. The debt tax service decreases by 123,000 in this budget based on existing debt service schedules and repayments and advances of the highway fund. So the debt service levy actually goes down a little bit. The way that the finance department has been setting up debt service is basically to anticipate higher expenses for such as building projects or major renovations to our buildings. And that's what we're going to kind of go about, go over a little bit this evening. Of course, utility and fuel costs have increased tremendously for the 2023 budget, based on recent trends and the uncertainty in the market. I mean, of course, highway uses tons and tons of fuel. The ADRC uses in transportation, facilities a little bit, parks. Okay, here's the outstanding debt limit. We took a look at equalized value. Equalized value has been going up throughout the years. Basically, the county can borrow 5% of its total equalized value. Our current debt right now is at 13,927,270. That does include, we're basically borrowing about 7 million this year. So that 13, almost 14 million includes the 7 million that we are proposing at borrowing this year. You know, our available debt limit, we're only using about 96.5% of our available debt limit. The capital funds projected for this upcoming year, you know, we're looking at DS 200 tabulators and express vote printing machines for elections. The price on tang of that is roughly about, not quite a million dollars. It's going to help an election integrity. The whole, I think we've talked about that, where you're basically not purchasing extra ballots. It's going to probably save about 15 cents per ballot, plus all the waste that we throw away from the excess ballots that we don't use. If you have any questions, you can talk to Maria Davis over in the county clerk's office. She's welcome to show you. All those, I think it's a really good investment. We're looking at putting about 175,000 on a project on the highway facility for the solar project. That project is basically to pay back within about seven years. We also have a 1.6 million highway wetland mitigation bank, which basically, when you're looking at highway projects, if you're going through wetlands, if you take any wetlands away, you've got to remediate that with other wetlands. We've got to create some wetlands, so we have a wetland bank that either the county can use or other people can purchase those also. Okay, let's take a look at some revenue highlights, which has really been exciting, is that the sales tax collections are estimated to increase by 885,000, you know, or about 11% over 2022. Back in 2021, they budgeted less sales tax because of COVID. They thought the sales tax was actually going to be less, but it actually was very, very strong. It actually helped us fund some salary increases and helped the budget tremendously this year. We're expecting that to continue because Forward Analytics is still projecting sales tax to be strong than the next year. Investment income is estimated to increase approximately 512 million bucks. You know, you've got a $126 million budget. Our finance department does an awesome job in investing those funds that aren't being needed at the time. And, you know, half a million dollars in increased investment income, also taking advantage of the higher interest rates that are taking place in the current market. This is not really income, but it's just to let you know that there's about 6.4 million left in the state and local fiscal recovery funds. About 900,000 is going to be used over for, hopefully going to be used for the election equipment that we're going to propose, but right now there is about 6.4 million available in those ARPA funds. Okay, let's take a look at human resources and a little bit of employment as a whole. Personal costs of all the departments are going to reflect a 2% annual adjustment increase to the county's wage and classification plan, along with modifications to the plan, including the elimination of lower steps and grades within the plan. All of the county benefits are remaining relatively flat, a slight increase in the WRS contributions. I think most of you understand how the grades and the steps work in the county salary plan, that when an employee comes to work, they're basically put at a grade level based on their experience and the job that they're doing. And the higher the experience, the higher the technical job they're doing, the higher the grade, the more they're paid. Once they become employed in the county, they go through a step process that every single year they go up a step. The first two years, they get a 2% increase, automatic increase after the first couple of years. Then, again, it's years three to five, they get about a percent and a half, and after that, it's a percent. So that's a guaranteed benefit that goes on while being employed at the county. So what we did is we eliminated, we had some steps that were actually being paid $12 for part-time parks employees, part-time facilities employees, part-time, I think there's actually some part-time over at HHS. And there's no way we could attract employees at $12 an hour for the jobs that we're requiring them to do. So we took away some of those lower grades. Our minimum wage right now is about $15. So because of the, we raised that wage up. It's reflecting in the budget, it was going to cost them some money in the 2023 budget to employ those employees. Also, I'll actually go over the next slide of what kind of happened with the employees. Oh, I'm sorry. There's a couple that I want to go over. Actually, go over there. The health insurance fund, which is very strong, is projected to have a surplus of $585 due to lower-than-anticipated claims. We are looking at options for employee benefit at the end of this year, because right now, by the end of the year, we're going to have 9.4 million total fund balance in that fund. Because there have been less claims by employees, we've got this, again, this surplus that we actually, we wanted to potentially bring down. We actually made plans, they made plans last year to hopefully bring it down, but because there was less claims, we actually are adding to it because the employees are just, either we're not getting sick, not getting hurt, and being much more healthy, which is really excellent. But we are looking at some kind of options of doing some little benefit to try to bring that fund a little bit more down. And, because we basically haven't been increasing employee expenses, medical expenses for many years, which is really an asset to employees and an asset to the county. As far as for recruitment and retention, it continues to be a really top priority. The county has long-term vacancies in the sheriff's office, Health and Human Services, the healthcare center, finance and facilities, as well as many volunteers are being short over at the ADRC, causing them to staff, causing them hard to staff many of their programs. And you all know that the employee shortage, we actually had to raise some wages for specific groups in the sheriff's department and the healthcare center. And I'll be going over some salaries that we did this past year. Also, in human resources, this whole aspect of what COVID has done with working at home, we are going to actually take a look at evaluating the working-from-home policies and how that's going to go forward. And actually in dealing with the development of a potential law enforcement center, government facilities, building, how we set that up to go into the future for working from home. But overall, the personal services budget decreased, is going to, budgeted is expected to decrease about a negative 2.6% due to the estimated 2% annual adjustment for the county wages and classification plan and corresponding fringe benefits, and the hire of limited employees. Well, the Health and Human Services hired an ERP project. Because we actually decreased full-time equivalent positions by 16 last year. And because of that decrease in those positions, that money goes back into the budget, even though we did have an increase in wages, our overall personal expenses are actually going to go down. But what happened last year, let's take a look at the employees, what we did to last year. On last year, on January 1 of 2022, we gave the employees 1 and 1/4% increase plus the step. You know, the step is what's guaranteed at the end of the year, but we gave them an extra 1 and 1/4%. On July 10, we gave another 1% plus another step, an extra and above what they normally get. On July 1 of 2023, what's going to happen this year is we're going to give them 2% plus a step. So if you take a look at that, the above wages that they normally would get is about 5 and 1/2%. Why I say that is because, you know, we're looking at the whole wage package, employer retention. You need to know kind of what's been happening in the past, what the cumulative effect of that salary has been for the employees to make decisions in the future. The budget is very, very tight going into next year, and how we use those remaining dollars is going to have some tough decisions to be made. And like I said, some departments actually did get a special increase because those departments were changing so rapidly that we had to do something fairly quickly, otherwise we'd have lost employees. And so I made those decisions as an executive to do, make those adjustments to those divisions and to retain those employees in the sheriff's department and retain some employees in the healthcare center. And if you disagree with that, let me know, but that's what I did. Also, when it comes to employment, we basically only have one new position request that's coming from the sheriff's department for a communications supervisor. So that's all that's being added to this budget. And also, there's a reclassification request. We're basically over at the district attorney. We have a legal associate supervisor that's basically taking on the supervision of two people that was basically underneath the district attorney. We feel the district attorney doesn't need to supervise these two people, that the legal associate can supervise this person. And because that legal associate was actually a lower grade than the people that they were going to supervise, according to county policy, we had to raise that person up to a higher grade level for supervision, and that basis can cost $8,000. Okay, we're going to go through some departments. Now, a lot of this stuff is going to be kind of boring. This is kind of the technical type stuff, but I'll go over some highlights within some of these things. For planning zoning, the contractual services decreased overall by 21.2% to the removal of completed grants for the Health Lakes and Rivers Grant, Conservation Champions Grant, DNR Aquatic Invasive Species Grant. This also includes the reduction of the Completed Groundwater Initiative Research Funds for the Countywide Groundwater Testing Project. There is going to be an implementation of RL filters that are being installed in the county for nitrogen remediation with the ARPA funds. We actually put up an authorization for a weed commissioner within the county, basically because of the well-personed problem that's showing up within the county, and he can actually have a little bit more authority underneath his belt and have the support of the county rather than just his word. Personal services reflect a 7.9% decrease due to the 2% annual adjustment for the county wage and classification plan, corresponding fringe benefits offset by elimination of a one full-time equivalent executive assistant position. The director, Tim Reed, had an executive assistant. It decided to leave. He decided not to renew that position. I was hoping we were going to renew that position because I was going to be looking at, with him, to do some zoning ordinance changes. And we're going to actually go over all the Portage County zoning ordinances, take out all the old ones, put in better understanding wording. But we decided to take that position out. We can still get it done, but it'll just take a little bit longer. Because the budget, again, being tight, we took that position out. A decrease of 20.7% or 78,000 due to a decrease grants for 2023, mostly carryforward soil and water conservation management cost share agreements, and a decrease of 40,000 for the elimination of participation in the Wisconsin Fund Septic System Replacement Grant Program. An increase in the soil and water resource management cost share agreements, staffing grant of $12,000. Let's take a look at the clerk records. Revenues are expected to decrease 24,000 or 7.7% due to collection trends for passport fees. They're just basically eliminating the photos. They're willing to do passports twice, twice a week rather than all five days. And also because of Guardian Edelweiss recoupments, medical services recoupments, bail bond fortressers. Juvenile revenues for CHIPS and TPR attorney fees are now pursued via federal funding dispersed through Department of Children and Families. County share of fines for 2023 are expected to increase by about $10,000 or about 11%. They eliminated one full-time equivalent in that office also. Also, the law library is about to be moved over to the Portage County Library. They weren't really being used a whole lot, so they thought it'd be better use by putting it in the Portage County Library. County clerk, of course, with less elections, there's going to be less money attributed to that year. And also, we talked about the DS 200s and the express vote printing machines and the CIP plan. Let's look at the Heding Disability and Resource Center. Intergovernmental revenues increased by $11,000 or 1/2% as a result of increases to Resource Center grant funds for activities supported by the Federal Medicaid reimbursement and Older American Act one-time ARPA funding. Personal expenses reflect a 7.1% decrease due to the following 2% annual adjustment increase for the county wage and classification plan and corresponding fringe benefits, and increase of a .15 FTE Medicare Part D enrollment specialist, but there was an elimination of .6 FTE for RSVP assistant, and the elimination of one full-time equivalent adult daycare center support, and .9 full-time equivalent adult daycare center aid. Because of the short funds and because of something that's been going on over there in COVID, it's been a really tough transition. The elderly have not been coming back as quickly during the COVID recovery as we had hoped. And trying to find volunteers for some of their programs is very, very difficult, and which they kind of rely on a lot. And so because of that, they're actually changing their nutrition program down some, and they're actually closing down one program. Supplies and expenses rose 6% or $21,000 to an increase of $57,000 weighted to raw food, which is an offset by decreases in advertising, liquid supplements, photocopying and printing, program supplies, voluntary travel, and the removal of one-time expense for software for the senior center. Again, the healthcare center budget reflects an operating loss that requires the use of additional tax levy in the amount of 2,885,449. The county may increase its levy during the building project. With the difficulty of recruiting medical staff and the lowering census population and increased building costs, the board, you guys, will be faced with some tough diffusions in the future. An overall increase of 84,000 or 17,800 is based on anticipated decrease in supplemental funding in the amount of 115,000 based on formula projection, and an anticipated increase in use of provider relief funds in the amount of 200,000 for 2023. Resident room and board revenues are expected to decrease 56,000 or 1.4% based on third-party payer information and current year collection estimates. This decrease is a result in decreased census estimate of 32 to trends on the current payer mix. Let's take a look at Health and Human Services. An increase of 25,000 or 8.8% for licenses and permits based on prior collections, an estimated fee increase. A decrease of $10,000 or 12.5% based on estimated caseload for OWI assessments. Property tax revenues increases by 93,000 or 1.7% for increased demand on child welfare and mental health services. An overall decrease of 322,000 or 3.6 resulting primarily from a decrease of 294,000 in COVID-19 pandemic funding or public health services. An increase overall by 12.3% or 766,000 primarily due to the increase of consumers in the comprehensive community services and children's long-term support programs, state waitlist elimination plan, and rate settling initiative, and an increase in the mental health inpatient revenue. Also, because of the tough funding that they had, there was a decrease of 162,000 to assist with increased presidential and inpatient expenses due to the COVID pandemic in an effort to maintain sustained budget. So even Kim trying to stay within budget, has to cut some certain areas of services, and it's just tough all the way around. Health and Human Services also. They're in need of enterprise resource planning program to record and retain patient records and incorporate with other users. I thought this was, you know, during my campaign, they had requested this. I thought, this is just an easy fix. Just let's just go in there and throw a computer in there and it'll be done. It's a half a million dollar project. We've got this old computer called an AS400 that's still incorporated in the IT system, and that has to be totally taken out and put the new system in. And all the octopus strands that go to all the divisions, the hospitals, the departments, it's a big, big plan. And hopefully, we can look at putting it in the capital improvement plan in the future. It's a definite need over there. It would really make some improvements. But it's still there. They're still actually doing some paperwork files and paperwork intake, and it really is slow. And so that's one aspect I hope to change while I'm in office. Let's take a look at the register of deeds. Revenues are expected to decrease 30,500 or 8.3% resulting from decreased recording activity due to increased interest rates. Real estate transfer fees increased 20,000 or 9.5% based on the current trends in the real estate market. Personal expenses reflect a 6.1% increase due to the estimated 2% annual adjustment for the county wage, it's the classification plan, and corresponding fringe benefits, and 11,000 dollar increase in the county's share of health and 11,000 dollar increase in the county's share of health insurance due to employer health insurance elections. County contractual services increased 7.2% due to the increase of information technology, Facilities. Personal services increased over by 3.7% due to the 2% adjustment for the county's wages and classification plan and corresponding fringe benefits. Contractual services increased 3.8% due to an increase of $19,000 in utility costs, $7,500 for architectural engineering services, and $6,700 for elevator repairs. The 2023 budget reflects the following utility cost increases: 6% for water, 10% for natural gas, 6% for electricity. Capital projects increased due to a planned purchase of a truck, a van, and a cargo mail van in 2023. Vehicle purchases did not take place in 2022 due to availability. And also, facilities are gonna potentially be working on designing, they're potentially billing two major county projects, the healthcare center and also the LEC jail project. Public safety, basically property tax revenue increases $23,000 or almost 1% to fund increases to ambulance provider contracts. Fees for ambulance services are estimated to increase $131,000 or 8.2% based on current billing and collective trends. An increase of $57,000 or fund balance applied to the purchase of an ambulance equipment. In 2023, the contract will end. We have to take a look at renegotiating. We'll probably start as soon as February because it takes several months. We want to have it done before August in time for budget time next year, but that contract is going to be renegotiated. Information technology allocations are based on an increase of $244,000 or 8.3% to other county departments. Internet security is a constant threat and getting more and more expensive. It's always a concern. A friend of mine just graduated from UWSP. He's actually working in internet security, 24 years old, $130,000 job, $45,000 worth of benefits, working from home for a New York company. That's the kind of things we might have to deal with going into the future. And so it could get interesting. Also, we're trying to develop a plan with Shane for, you know, working from home, how we facilitate that, how we manage that, how we monitor that. It's all a concern, but now with this whole COVID, you've got employees coming in that sometimes they almost expect it, or how's it gonna work? And the efficiencies, is there different pay rates? All that has to be discussed, talked about, and put in policies if we want to do something Parks. A decrease of $51,000 in grant revenue for the completion of the Jordan Park Dam is not gonna be in the next budget. Parks continue to do very, very well with excellent rentals and sites and lodges. I mean, this is just a real bright spot. Whenever I look at Ryan, I just, he's the kind of guy I like to talk to because it's just like, boy, you know, he's got money coming out of his ears and it's a...
I just like to look at Ryan and smile.
Yeah, but I just like, yeah, it's always, it's just fun working with the parks. Anyway, charges for service are expected to increase $68,000 or 13% for various park fees across all park services. A decrease of $80,000 for the use of the private donations in 2022 for parks, facilities, or playground equipment. Anybody want to donate more to parks? I mean, just see Ryan, he'll take as many checks as they're willing to give them. Highway. Property tax revenue increases by 18% overall, which includes $73,000 for highway resurfacing projects and $775,000 for highway bridge and culvert aids, which we talked about earlier. Vehicle registration fees remain flat based on projections for fees. Overall, an increase of $348,000 or 11% based on an expected decrease in general transportation aids by $37,000, and an increase to local road improvement program funding in the amount of $386,000. Fuel expenses are dramatically increased, vehicle expense and availability significantly Some of the big questions we're gonna have this upcoming year. We take a look at the healthcare center. We are having, because of the employee retention and what's going on in the employee market, we're having a real hard time finding employees to staff the healthcare center. It's a major concern. There's also trends of lower census or lower residences going into the healthcare center, which is a real potential problem. Also, with the construction costs have gone up in the past nine months, if we can actually build it once we find out, if we can build it with the referendum appropriated for it, we're gonna have to take a look at all that. So to me, when I take a look at trying to weigh the referendum and all the other things that have changed dramatically in the last six months, there's gonna be a big decision on your hands. Again, when I say that, by the way we spend our money, we determine our values. So that's gonna be a decision, you know, again, you only have so much money to go around. It is a decision that you as the board are gonna have to make, even with the referendum being non-binding, and I just throw that out there. Taking a look at the LEC, the jail and the government buildings. Counties in Wisconsin are mandated to maintain a courthouse, sheriff's department, and jail by state statute. Our county has been studying the need for a new or radically updated courthouse and jail for the last 26 years. Our current buildings have provided us with very good use for 60-plus years for the county silly building and 30-plus years for the LEC and jail. The fact that these facilities are outdated, do not need or meet safety standards, and can no longer properly serve the needs of the community at a level required by a modern society are not disputed. The county is in the planning process of working with BWBR, Duberry Architects, and construction manager Findorf to present us concepts and budgets in October. What happens time and time again is that the need is understood, the need is very black and white, but when the budget is presented, many decision-makers vacillate, and rather than dealing with the situation and coming up with a solution, they delay the situation down the road several years to someone else. Every time construction is delayed, the price goes up by millions of dollars, the county incurs hundreds of thousands of dollars in design fees, staff time, and wasted effort. Our buildings continue to deteriorate, citizens continue to be put in unsafe conditions, and we are not able to provide the proper services that our community needs and deserves. Many of our elected employees are working in inappropriate, outdated, inefficient conditions. I urge all supervisors to consider all the facts dealing with this monumental decision in a way the pros and cons of the information that will be presented as we look forward to position the county for the next 70 years. Let's be the leaders that we are elected to be. Okay, let's take a look at where we're at. Actually, Portage County is in excellent financial position. Your finance department, our finance department, has done an excellent job the last 10 years. When I take a look at the net new construction, how you get budget funding and how the expenses and basically have given the department heads 0% demands for their budgets. The more I work in this place, the more I am just amazed at the dedication, the work ethic, to do what is done for the county. And so, you know, $13 million worth of debt is not a whole lot of debt. They've been actually working the debt for the last 10 years to prepare for a large debt force such as a jail, LEC, healthcare facility, and we are positioned to do that. And right now, we don't have a lot of excess funds because of some of the excess costs and the inflation. When you've got an 8.5%, 9% inflation rate, and only about a half of that increase in income, you can't squeeze blood out of a turnip. And so we can go into this next year's budget, I think we can do well, but there's just not a lot of money to go around. There's some things, I've been to some county executive meetings, and what they're proposing is, once the elections go forth, we're basically gonna lobby our representatives, our new elected representatives, and take a look at how the state actually gets, the counties get funding. We're taking a look at making the state not give so many unfunded mandates that if they're gonna, you know, require H&amp;H services to do something, they're gonna fund it. If they're gonna require public safety, certain mandates, they need to fund it. So we're gonna be looking through those and see if we can push some of those incentives down and get those accomplished. We're also looking at the 5% sales tax where actually every county would get 10% or another half a percent would come back to the counties. We think that's a proposal that might go through. Also, we can suspend the levy limit. I don't think that's as much of a possibility as the other two, but that's what we're doing is working with our state legislators and to get more funding coming at the county because the county has been, you know, funding more and more of their expenses over the past 15, 20 years. I'd like to thank you for your time and your service. It's been an awesome time being here. If there's any questions, I can take any questions, or Jenny's gonna present the budget in brief, and we can take questions after that.
I'd just like to say too that there's, Wisconsin counties is also working on a few of these things to help the counties out. There's actually been a lot of acknowledgement that we are one of the states that is property tax-heavy and sales tax-light, and they're looking at trying to adjust that or the possibility of moving those two closer together. We get a lot of people that come in and out of the state that spend dollars here, and that would help the people who own property here to give them some relief. So there's actually a lot of discussion going on about that. There's things in the Register of Deeds office where we're looking at trying to get some of that money back to the counties that the state for, I mean, nobody's really sure why they changed it, and it's a sizable amount of money too. So there's actually some, a lot of things that are going on with discussion at the state, and they seem to be willing to listen to it. So those things are good to hear. And they're all more favorable for the county. Every time we have discussions with people from the Capitol, they always say that the counties are the ones that are doing all the work, and we need to make sure that we're here to help support them. So those are good things to be hearing out of the state. Anybody have any questions for the executive supervisor Gifford?
Yeah, you know, having just reviewed the CAP Services Community Need Survey, which is done with our low-income households throughout, not just Portage, but five-county region, I'm wondering if your office is aware of the critical lack of affordable housing in Portage County? And I'll give you just a quick fact check that among people with 25% of the area median income, only one in four housing units is affordable according to the normal definitions, and at 80% of area median, four in 10 are not affordable. So, you know, I came back from the county's association rather disappointed in our county's association as far as the lack of progress on this critical issue. And I debriefed very briefly the Health and Human Services Board yesterday, or yeah, yesterday on this. And tied in with that, I see a drastic 25% decline in intergovernmental revenue, what we call shared revenue. And if anything, if we're ever gonna solve this affordable housing crisis, that number is not only gonna not be negative, it's gonna be sharply positive upward. And the counties can have a role in assisting municipalities in providing public housing, low-income housing for our people. Because, you know, Portage County is below average in terms of personal income. I just looked at Forward Analytics Green Book. In Alice Report that United Way is gonna come out with, you will find that 45% of our households in Stevens Point are economically stressed, or what they call Alice acronym. So I think that that's a big, big area that needs to get, we need to get working on, and that's just, I know you don't have an easy answer for that, but nobody does.
Yeah, actually, I know some realtors, and also I talk to the city a little bit. There's some regulations that have to change if there's development in the city, and there's some incentives that the realtors have to have in order for them to build. So it's a big consideration. We have to get the parties at the table and discuss some things. I got a lot of things in my paint blob, but I paint plate bob, but it is on my list. And when I talk to realtors, I do mention it to them. When I talk to the city, I'm gonna be talking to Mark Cordes and Ryan and see where that goes. But, you know, I, because I was actually, I was at the committee meeting that they actually discussed a lot of that, was at, and I was surprised. Some ideas that came forth as far as putting certain sections in apartment complexes or housing complexes associated to a lower income, and how you evaluate that, and was it was kind of a good idea? And if you provide some rebates for that, again, it's all possible. But let's get to the table, talk about it, and I think it can be done. We just gotta get the people to the table.
Thanks.
You know, and didn't the city of Stevens Point just pass something on zoning? Can somebody help me? Did they have something on a zoning to allow smaller lots or smaller homes or something? I thought there was that going on with them. I'd call them mother-in-law houses or, what were they called?
Accessory dwelling units.
Accessory dwelling units, thank you.
Mother-in-law apartment.
To help fill some of those niches or whatever. And we also donate money, I believe, to the gentleman from the city of Stevens Point, where they were trying to educate people to, that help them out, and I think that was Bob, you had brought the gentleman forward. I'm trying to think who that was too, where we're trying to help people out. So we are doing some things, so. Anybody else? Jen, you're up.
So I will try to be brief but informative. I was reflecting on my way over here today, and I realized this is number 15. This is my 15th budget in this role, and Tricia Hyman has been here with me every step of the way as well. So I told her happy 15th anniversary as we walked over. So we're gonna go through the budget in brief. The document is a work towards progress. It's a little updated, a little bit less industrial-looking than it has been in the past, but you have to remember, we're finance people, so this is kind of a stretch for us. We get it as creative as we can get it. Today, once the meeting started, the budget in brief document and the full budget document was posted at the county's website. So when we're done, I'll have Leith throw that on the screen so you can see where to find the full budget document as well. This document is just intended to be kind of a brief overview of what's in the budget, kind of just give you a feel of what's in there. You know, after 15 years of doing budgets and kind of thinking about the different budgets over time, I will say that this one is, I don't want to say status quo because the county's doing some really great things, but it really had an emphasis on keeping core services, looking at employee issues, recruitment, retention, and the things that we could do in those areas. So the first page is just kind of an overall organizational chart, county departments, how we're organized. Second page, or the page two is kind of the who's who on the board, and your county executive, your elected officials and department directors and who they are, a table of contents to help you follow the document, a message from county executive Pavelski on kind of what this budget is about. On page six is a map of the county. We did update it this year. The last one was from 2014, so I think we got all the So I think we got all the right roads in here. Thank you, Jeff Hartman. Then starting on page seven and page eight is just kind of a little community profile of making sure that, you know, you have a little, some little tidbits about what our schools are, who our highest taxpayers are, just a little bit of information about the county in general. On page nine, this is kind of where I'm gonna start. John kind of already walked through these categories of levy. Just a few things that I'd like to point out. One thing that's a little different this year is I broke out property tax chargebacks. It's something we do every year if there are any. Those get levied specific to the municipality that the chargeback occurred in. So they're not shared countywide. They're shared with the municipality in which it occurred. The operating levy, that's subject to the limit. The healthcare center referendum levy and the debt service levy are exceptions to that limit. Everything else on that list is outside the levy limit. They happen per statute or through language that allows for those things to occur without being subject to the levy limit. On page 10, this is just kind of an overview of our revenues and expenses of all funds in the county. You can see we have just over 126 million in revenues and we are planning to spend $126 million. So that means we have a balanced budget. We're gonna use current resources to pay for current expenses and that's our plan. On the bottom there, you can see in both categories, we have use of fund balance or net position and contribution to fund balance and net position. We do plan to save money for certain things. We have equipment replacement funds. We have vehicle replacement funds. We have funds that carry forward balances. We have, you know, purchases that we might plan to make in this year. They don't happen. You know, we've been having issues, for example, with purchasing squad cars. We placed the order and they're like, yeah, nine months you'll get your squad cars. So some things just don't occur in the time period or in the fiscal period that we want them to happen in. So that's what creates some of those things as well. On page 11, this is kind of an overall view of comparing 2021, what our modified budget is in 2022. What does that mean? Last fall, you adopted a budget. And since then, every month I come forward and I bring you budget amendments without fail. Something new has happened. We have a grant. We have a new program. Something changed and we need to change it. That's what the modify column is. That's us keeping up with what we're doing. 22 projection, that's what we think is gonna happen by December 31st. Now, I have a really good team, but you know, this might look a little different at December 31st. This is our best guess today based on what we know of what we think is gonna happen. 2023 budget, based on everything that we know, this is what we're projecting for next year based on what those available resources are and the programs that we vetted in the budget. Overall, it's a 7.4% decrease over a modified budget. What does that mean? That means that in certain categories, specifically in capital and in some intergovernmental revenues and programs, that dropped because there's certain things we plan for more on a project basis than we do on a fiscal year basis. We've estimated that we're gonna spend a lot of the approved capital projects by the end of this year because we don't know when they're gonna be completed. If they're not completed, what does that mean? January 1st, we take those existing balances, we roll them forward into the next year. So that budget's automatically gonna go up on January 1st. But at this point in time, we've projected that we're gonna spend a lot of those things. That'll be the same for state and local fiscal recovery projects. We have some big projects that were approved in 2022. You're gonna hear me talk about it a little bit later. But we've planned that we're gonna spend those. If they don't happen by December 31st, we're gonna roll that budget forward into the next year and amend it at the first of the year. Categories for revenues and expenses, this table on page 11. Revenues, we track in these categories and expenses we track in too. So I'm just gonna do a brief explanation. Taxes, you all know what taxes are. Intergovernmental revenues, those are grants and state aids and federal aids. So when we're getting money in grants, that's the line that it goes in. Licenses and permits is exactly what it is. Fines, forfeits and penalties, those are surcharges for forfeitures typically. Public charges for services, these are fees that we charge residents or consumers for different services that they're getting in different programs. Intergovernmental charges for services, these are fees to governments. So this is us building a road in a township and giving them a bill. It's not a grant. It's a bill. It's an invoice. So it's a fee for an intergovernmental service. We have lots of arrangements with other municipalities, with the state of Wisconsin. And those are, that's what's in that category. Miscellaneous revenue could be donations. It could be interest income. No proceeds is, bond proceeds or no proceeds. Other financing sources is typically transfers between funds. And then use of fund balances, taking from those replacement funds that I talked about earlier and planning to use those dollars for some type of purchase. Categories of expenditures, this is by function. So we break those out into those defined by the state of Wisconsin for reporting. General government is basically everything that, you know, kind of your government provides, your county clerk's office, your clerk of courts office, your treasurer's office, you know, your kind of shared services administrative offices, myself, human resources, facilities, those are all general government services. Public safety, you know, the biggest one in that arena is sheriff's office. Public works, we think of highway and solid waste. Health and human services, it's not just health and human services. It's Aging and Disability Resource Center. It's veterans. It's healthcare center. Culture, rec and education, your library, your parks, your UW extension. Conservation and development, that's what we're talking about, planning and zoning and the programs within planning and zoning, like the business park. And then, of course, we have capital debt and then other financing uses, which again is transfers and contribution to fund balance. That's us putting away money to spend on equipment replacement kinds of things later. The next page, page 12, just kind of focus on the bottom here. Same numbers, just broken out a little differently. On the expenditure side, personnel, that's our people cost. We're talking about, you know, wages, benefits, all those costs to attract and recruit and retain the workforce that we have. Contractual services, those are services where we're paying someone else to provide something. So, you know, plumbing services, utilities, the dietary contract at healthcare center, those types of expenses. Supplies and expenses, think of goods, think of things that are tangible, things that we need to buy. If they get to a certain dollar amount, those, those become capital in nature because of the threshold of the dollar amount. But, you know, any type of operating expense we have. Parks breaks out the building materials, so that's why we see that there. Fixed charges are things like insurances. And then grants and contributions. You know, we were just talking about like non-county agencies, the payments that we make to different non-county agencies typically fall on grants and contributions. So that's kind of a summary of the breakout here and what that means. Page 13, a couple of things to highlight on this page that are of interest. This is a budget summary by fund. The county has organized their accounting in what we call funds. We do fund accounting. So these are the various funds within the county. This is to give you an estimated January 1st of 2023 fund balance or net position of those funds, what we plan in those funds for property tax, revenues and expenses, and what the ending fund balance is gonna be. Now, again, these are estimates because I can't tell you what the fund balance is gonna be until it happens, but we do a lot of work to come up with estimates that we feel are, are good estimates to be able to provide to you tonight. If you look at that property tax column, you can see by fund how much of that 35.9 million property tax is kind of allocated out to different funds. You can see the amount in the general fund. You can see that there's 14.4 million in special revenue funds. There's four that, that receive levy. The EMS fund is the one that's outside the limit. You can see capital projects has 850,000. And you can see the healthcare center is projected to have 2.8, almost 2.9 million of the 4.5 million dollar referendum amount levied for 2023. So that's how we get to the total of 35.9, almost 36 million in tax levy. Page 14, just a couple of highlights for you. We just talked about taxes going up. Overall, here it shows 3.4 million dollars. Why is taxes 3.4 million dollars when the levy is only 2.6 million of that? There's other things in this category that would be sales tax. It's a tax. It fits into the broad category of taxes. So the 3.4 million dollar increase is, is subject to basically those two things. The other highlight on here that I'd like to point out is intergovernmental revenue. That dropped 6.7 million dollars. That's not reason for, or cause for concern. The drop from modified budget to 2023 is the state and local fiscal recovery funds that we talked about. We've approved almost 7 million or just over 7 million in projects. We're budgeting as if we're gonna spend those by the end of the year. Again, if we don't, those will roll forward. But there's really no way for us at this point in time to kind of project out what they're gonna spend this year and how much they're gonna spend next year. So we wanted to make sure to account for them and then we will make adjustments at the first of the year as well for that. The other category that had a more significant change was intergovernmental charges for services. And if you remember my example earlier, this went up 2.1 million dollars. And that's all attributable to highway. This is based on highway projects that are planned and what they intend to bill out for services. And keep in mind, when they bill out for services, some of that intergovernmental revenue is the county because we're one of their customers. On page 15, just a couple of highlights on revenues and percent of total budget overall. Currently taxes is at 37% of the overall total revenues. Last year, we were 36.4. Intergovernmental revenue is at 15.3, last year 15.5. Public charges for services, last year 13.9, this year 13.5. And then intergovernmental charges for services, last year 24.1, or last year 23.2, this year 24.1. That was the most significant change across all your revenues. So again, everything is kind of very similar in terms of how we plan for the budget going forward. On page 16, here we have expenditures by type and by function. Again, broken out for you. A couple of the things in the categories, just to kind of point out. At the top, personnel services again went down 1.3 million dollars overall. That was a 17.91 FTE reduction in various programs that county executive Pavelski talked about a little bit earlier. Contracts went up roughly 3 million dollars. Some of that was related to IT allocation costs going up 8.6%. Utility costs increasing. Highway projects that we talked about, you know, if the revenue is going up, the expenses for those services go up as well. And also in health and human services, plan for additional CCS expenses for consumers in that program as well as, you know, something like adding dietary services that wasn't in the budget in 2022. I just have to remember what year I'm in when I'm talking about a budget. So we made that change, but it, it wasn't in the budget originally. And now it's in the next year budget. So it's gonna show a, it's gonna show a change. Supplies generally went down 1.2. I don't think there's really anything significant to kind of report there. We did have an increase in, in grants related to ARPA in which we were able to purchase things that were kind of more in a supply kind of category. So when those things go away, those expenses go away. So a lot of it was one-time kinds of things. General government on the bottom there, again, we had that decrease of 4.6, which is roughly 1.1 million dollars. That can be attributable to the decline in health insurance claims and sick leave payouts primarily. Those are the two large categories there. Public safety is increases to EMS provider contracts that were planned for 2023 as well as one of our larger departments within public safety. So that would be the sheriff's office and that would be attributable mainly to wage increases. Public works, a growth of 3.5 million and that's based on anticipated projects again. Health and human services, that category, a decrease of 4.5 million dollars. Again, that's attributable to those state and local recovery projects that we put in kind of one-time, planning to spend yet this year. And if we don't, we'll roll those forward. And then also healthcare center and also Aging and Disability Resource Center, they had a lot of one-time kind of ARPA dollars as well that they did some things with in 2022. Conservation and development had a decrease of 1.9. The two notes that I'll point out there is there were some grants that were reduced that were not recurring. They were one-time as well as the business park. The business park is in the budget, but there's nothing budgeted for 2023 because we've sold all the lots. So now currently, the county is working through a process to transition the business park to its, its new existence, which is an owners' association. Our covenants had determined that once the lots in the business park were sold, that the business park would have an owners' association that would then, from there on out, moving forward, manage the business park. So we've been working on that for a while and that is intended to happen by January 1st. That's our goal. So that is what is in the budget, is that transition occurring. Page 17 is just kind of some biographs to kind of give a comparison of year to year. Just some people are more visual and they like, they like pictures instead of numbers. So I tried to provide something for everybody. Page 18 is, again, this is just some expenditure comparisons. Again, really flat. Personnel services was 38.9%. Prior year, it's 38.3. Contractual services was 40.6. It's 42.6. So not a lot of variation across categories. We're pretty typical year over year. Same on page 19. General government, 19.1 for 2023. Previous budget was 20.9. That's probably one of the largest variances. Public works, 27.2. Prior year was 25%. And health and human services was 25% or projected for 2023 and was 26. Again, that could be the, the removal of those state and local fiscal recovery projects. I have to think of a way to shorten how I say that because it's just a long phrase. So we're gonna have to come up with like a code word for it. Page 20, we provide you two pages that look very similar. And they're about fund balance because it's very important that we tell you what your fund balances are projected to be. So we have to determine what we think it's gonna be at the end of this year and what we think it's gonna be at the end of next year. So this first page on 20 is what we think it's gonna be at the end of this year. This is kind of split up into the types of fund categories. So in special revenue funds, there's a whole bunch of funds together. Highway, health and human services, EMS, they're all totaled together. Your enterprise funds are highway and solid waste and healthcare center. And then your internal service funds are health insurance, risk management and IT. Down below, there's categories of fund balance, non-spendable. These are resources that is exactly what it says. You can't spend them. They're prepaid. They're, they're, they're things that exist. They have a financial statement cost, but they're, they're not at your disposal to go use. Restricted is restricted by an outside entity, meaning someone outside of this body has said what you can use it for. So a perfect example of that is jail assessment funds. That's statutorily defined how you can use that money. You can't use it outside of that statute. It explicitly says how you can use it. Committed, that's this body. I bring you a resolution every fall and you get to decide that we've made a commitment to have an equipment replacement fund and we're gonna use it for law enforcement vehicles. Assigned, that's a lower restriction. That could be, you know, myself or the finance committee saying, we're gonna set this aside because we have a use identified for those funds. And unassigned, those are the funds that don't have a specific use. You can use them at your discretion. We have a fund balance policy in Portage County that says we will maintain a balance of 15 to 25% of the county's total operating or total expenditures for those funds that have a levy. And this balance is And this balance this year, this 18.5 million puts us at 24.9%. So we're within our policy and we're in a really good position. Um, generally fund balances don't fluctuate too much, you know, unless there's something significant happening, but you know, they go up and down every year based on planned uses. Page 21, same thing. Um, the only thing I'll highlight here is the fund balance for unassigned in this is at 23.1%. Why did it go down? It's roughly the same amount. Our expenses are planned to go up. So that's why the calculation is a little bit different. Um, page 22 and 23 are just about the budget process, the timeline, who does what, when we do it. You know, we're, we're at the bottom of the page here. We're in October. This is our budget presentation. Uh, next big things are we're going to publish the county budget in the newspaper. We're going to, in November, have a meeting. We're going to have a public hearing. You're going to adopt the budget. Um, and then, you know, we're going to start all over again because that's what we do. Page 24, debt outstanding. We don't have a lot of debt outstanding. We're at 10.6 million. We're planning for some payments this year. We have some debt issues that we're planning for in 2023 of about 7.4 million dollars. That includes a wetland mitigation bank as well as some highway projects that we talked about, uh, earlier. And that puts us at about 13.9. John already kind of shared the, uh, um, debt limit. Um, we will never reach the ceiling. I would never advise you to reach the ceiling. I've never known anyone to reach the ceiling. Um, my husband would be shocked by that because he says, I don't understand that at home, but I really do. Um, but you know, these are things that we look at. These are things that, uh, S and P looks at when they rate us. Um, they want to look at our position. Where are we at with our debt limit? Where are we at with that compared to our general fund expenditures? Lots of different ratios and calculations. And you know, as, as we talk about debt a little bit more, um, uh, those things will, we'll, we'll talk about in much more depth. The, the big thing that, what you need to know out is we have two notes outstanding that paid for in 2024. We're planning on adding the 7.4 million, but again, when we add that, we're going to plan to pay it really quick too. So, um, we're in a very good position when it comes to issuing debt and what that looks like for Portage County. Um, page 25, this is a listing of our projects. We have four. Um, we have the elections equipment that was talked about, a proposed solar project at highway. And then of course the wetland mitigation bank. You can see that's the only one in the anticipated debt proceeds. Um, County Executive Pavelski also mentioned on the elections equipment, the potential of a state and local fiscal recovery funds project that has been submitted. It is in the budget right now, um, in terms of paying, um, for capital projects because, you know, we don't know if that's going to be awarded. We find value in the project that we need to have it identified and accounted for. Um, but you know, if we make different decisions down the road, that can potentially change. So that's worth noting. Um, the other thing that I'd point out regarding capital projects is you don't see in here, although it's in the plan because it's on the next page, you don't see a healthcare center facility and you don't see a government facility and you don't see some of the larger projects that we're talking about. Why are they not on this list? Because we don't have numbers yet. So it's really hard to put in a plan and plan around numbers that you don't know. When those numbers are determined, we will rework everything in terms of our debt service, the numbers that I talked about on the previous page. We will relook at how things fit into capital and we will come up with a financing plan. It's just, it's really hard to put in a budget, things you don't know. So that is why they're not in here, but they are addressed on page 26 under the 2023 28 Capital Improvement Plan. Um, yes, they're not in the plan. Um, some of these things in the plan, I just also want to point out on the bottom, um, they're not necessarily funded. So just because something is in a capital improvement plan, it's a plan, it's not an appropriation. So I think people sometimes get very confused about capital plans and think, well, the money's in the budget. No, that's not what that means. What's in the budget is next year's capital budget, which is what I showed you on the previous page. Um, so just because it's on this list, you know, for example, the piston bully groomer that's out there for years forward and Ryan's smiling because he really wants that piston bully groomer. Um, it's, it's not budgeted for yet. We know it exists and we know it's out there. Um, and I also did include a section on here on some of our capital achievements because I think we forget of all the good things that we do. And I think it's a nice thing to highlight that we do, we do really nice things in our community. Uh, page 27, uh, property value by municipality, just kind of a, so you can see what happened, um, over the county. Um, I thought it was interesting under the ratio that for the towns, they had a boost up. Um, I also did find it interesting, you know, the, the, the top number on the page was, you know, a 21.84% increase and we had one negative, uh, number as well. So I, I found that interesting that there was one that actually declined. I don't have anything significant to say about it, other than I found it interesting. Um, page 28, I think, um, this is just kind of a chart that kind of compares equalized val and property tax levy. You can see that, you know, we're 7.76% over the tax levy of the previous year. Uh, tax rate, um, you can see the comparisons, uh, percent new construction over time, 1.68%. I'll take it. It's not great, but we'll work with it. It's better than zero. Um, equalized property value, just a little graph to kind of show you how that, um, is represented. And, uh, page 29, just kind of a summary of positions and changes in various county departments. As I mentioned earlier, we went down 17.91 FTEs. Um, the departments that are in italics are the departments that had, had a change. So you can see clerk of courts, family court commissioner, district attorney, human resources, finance, sheriff, health and human services, aging and disability resource center, healthcare center and planning and zoning. Now, you're probably thinking, but John had in his budget presentation, we only did one new position. So how did all these departments change? That also takes into account all the state and local fiscal recovery positions that we added mid-year. Um, for example, the sheriff's deputy position that was added mid-year, um, uh, due to a, a state and local fiscal recovery program as well as, you know, um, the positions that through vacancies and attrition, we decided not to refill. And then we have a little graph on the back, um, that just kind of shows what kind of services those departments are in, um, as well. Um, the budget is on the county's webpage. Um, Lee is going to throw it on the screen so that you know where to find it. Um, this document is out there. The full budget document is out there. Um, it's a little newer look, so, but it's got the same content. It's got a little, a couple of new features as well. Um, if you have questions about the budget as you're reviewing it, um, invite us to meetings, um, myself, finance team, we love to come and talk. Um, we love to talk about what we do. We love to talk about the programs that we support. Um, so we're, we're more than happy to do that, um, as well as, uh, talk to the departments. Um, we're happy to help. Um, we really like to talk about these things now rather than later. Um, you know, the night to adopt the budget can get a little crazy when we all want to redo it. So if you have ideas or you have concerns or you have things that you want to see or you want to understand, we are more than happy to have those conversations now, um, instead of later. Um, and then just a couple of thank yous. I just thank the board, um, for being, uh, supportive. Uh, finance committee, um, they've just always been truly supportive and have been a, a, a voice of sound financial management and planning. So that has been, uh, a tremendous help to me. It makes my job that much easier. Thank County Executive Pavelski, um, and, um, department directors, they just, they work so hard and are so dedicated and this happens because of the hard work they do. And then I just want to thank my finance team and they're kind of in the back row there. Could you just stand up so people know who you are? Because you're the ones that...
That's Trish.
And I have some online too. They just are a truly talented and, and devoted team and, um, they make this possible. So it's all them. Thank you.
I, uh, I, I, before we go into questions, I want to echo a lot of the same things that Jen, Jen has said, that, uh, the finance committee and, and the people in the finance staff, uh, everything revolves around money, whether you like it or not. If we can't pay to, or have the money to do it, we can't do things. So it's, uh, it's very important that we're in the position that we're in and, uh, it's, it didn't come overnight either. Supervisor Barry Jakowski, then Supervisor Splinter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Jenny. I know it's hard to cut a budget in the, this large into small pieces, but I was just wondering if anybody knows what it's costing to cool this room down? Cold enough to hang meat in?
I, I have to say this because of me. I was really hot. I asked the sheriff to turn it down.
She was, she was, she was, I think she was just nervous and then she got in the zone there. She was just going, I'll admit it. Supervisor Splinter.
Uh, yeah, I thank you for, uh, taking us through the nuts and bolts and how this all goes together. Uh, the one question I, I kept coming in my mind is, uh, the bottom line, you know, I've got 2,800 voters that I represent and they appreciate all the nuts and bolts, but the, um, the big question, the big one is, are, is the mill rate, uh, what's going to, the tax levy going to increase or decrease from last year? That's the big question, I think. A lot of people would ask me, so you got the budget, is it going to increase things or decrease things or is it going to stay exactly the same?
So, so page nine is where that information is. And the one thing I will tell you how this works is your municipality is sending you your tax bill. The county appropriates through an apportionment to each municipality. So depending on whether they had growth or not, which is that chart that I showed you towards the end, where some municipalities had growth and others didn't, they have different ratios. So, you know, the person's tax bill in the town of Plover and the impact on county taxes is not the person, the same as the persons in the village of Plover. It's not the same. So, you know, when you're asking the county, how does that work? We're one portion of the tax bill. We say to the township or the municipality, your portion is this amount. They add it, they apportion it out and put it on your individual tax bill. Um, the best we can do is kind of this calculation at the bottom that says, um, a median tax owner, if your, if your home's 178,600, you will pay about $871 compared to last year's median home, which was 168,000, which I think was like $857. But again, it's, that's the best answer I can give you, um, because it depends on that municipality. It depends on what happened in your municipality in terms of your growth or decline in the overall equalized valuation. So I know that's a really long-winded answer, but it's, it's not something, Mike, I can just say it's 2%. I can't give you that answer.
I know, I know. The whole, the whole idea, I think, is, is that hopefully we, we stay level or even a little bit less, uh, depending on the situation.
I can generally tell you that property taxes went up 7.76%. That's true. So if you think to yourself, you know, property taxes might go up for me 7.6% over last year, but it's going to depend on what, what your assessed value and everything is, if, if it's different in terms of, you know, what your ratio is in your municipality, depending on equalized valuation. Equalized valuation is different than assessed value. Assessed value is how you get taxed in your municipality. Equalized valuation is a method to make kind of all those assessments equal because an assessor in one municipality can assess different than say another. You know, they've done a lot of work over time to make sure that those things kind of even out. But the reason it's called equalized is to make things equal so that you could never have an assessor lowball something and another assessor highball something, you know, because then it wouldn't be equal anymore. So that's why there's, there's, if you look on your tax bill, there's what's called an assessment ratio. And that assessment ratio is based on those, uh, up and down growth by municipality based on how much their equalized value went up in their municipality. So generally speaking, I can tell you taxes, property taxes went up 7.76%. And I can also tell you what that does on a $178,000 home, but that's not necessarily what your tax bill is going to be.
Okay, so, so I... Until the, until the different towns get to...
Yeah, because what, what Marie is going to do come November, when you adopt this budget, is she's going to apportion to those municipalities and say, town of Amherst, you owe county taxes, you know, $35,000. And they're going to put that into their process and they're going to tax the, the residents in that municipality. And then, um, it's going to show up as a county portion, but it's not going to be equal to what I'm showing you.
Okay.
Do you have anything you can add to that?
No, I mean, the municipalities...
They don't go until end of November.
Yeah, it's...
So it's hit or miss.
It's a really hard black and white answer.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
But hopefully I didn't make it worse.
So on your tax bill, there's five, is there five entities that are on there that make up your tax bill? Is it the municipality, the county, the school, the university on there and the tech college?
Tech college, yeah. And the state.
And the state are all on your tax bills and they all charge what they call a mill rate or so per hundred or per thousand dollars. So based on what your home is valued at. And if you look on page 28 on here, I think that's the question you were looking at for from the county. In 2022, our mill rate was $5.03.
That won't be on the tax bill.
No, okay. And, and, and this year we're projecting it to be 4.88.
And, and the reason that number goes down, it's not because we're getting less taxes, it's because we had 10.89% growth in equalized val. That means there's that much more property value to levy those taxes across. But then it's like, well, where did the property tax levy growth occur? Did it happen in the village of Plover? Did it happen in the town of Amherst? Did it happen? So though, that's how that happens.
It's not an easy answer and I know my particular home, which wasn't a, a big modest home, I think it was almost, it went up, uh, tens of thousands of dollars because Plover went through a reassessment. That might've been part of the reason that that was such a, a big jump, so. Uh, let's see, Supervisor Hakala.
Yeah, as an, as an accountant, you shouldn't have put this in front of me on page 16.
Please use your mic.
On, uh, page 16, uh, supplies and expenses, you got the percent changes, the positive 13%, it actually should be a minus 13. You put that in there just to see if I could find it, I think.
Well, I'm glad you did because we can fix it.
Yeah, I thought I should mention that.
Page 13, you said?
Uh, page 16.
16, okay.
Supplies and expenses.
We'll fix it online.
Everything else was perfect.
I, I, I wanted to see if you'd catch that.
I knew that.
Thank you for letting us know.
Anybody else?
I don't know not to try to slip anything past Greg.
Yes.
So am I, so am I.
Supervisor Madine.
Just a, a quick question. I think you were referring at page nine a lot, but there's a term that's always in the back of our minds, levy limits imposed by the state. And if we look at...
Yep.
...page nine, maybe you could illustrate that for us. That the top line...
Sure.
...is the one that's subject to that and all the others can be determined locally.
Sure, so...
How we are fitting that.
Sure. So the first line there, the operating levy, that's subject by the state, that's subject to the net new construction. From there, there are exceptions to levy. One exception is a referendum. So that's the next line. So that's still part of the local levy limit calculation because it's an exception. So we have to document it and we have to note it. Debt service levy, that's another exception. Any debt post 2005 in accordance with an approved, uh, repayment schedule can be listed as an exception. So as long as we have an authorized debt issued, um, under the debt service levy, we can list that as an exception. Again, it's included on the worksheet. We got to show our calculation. Countywide EMS, it is, it is not part of the levy limit calculation. It solely goes on the apportionment. It's not even a consideration, nor like when we did the referendum question in April, it wasn't part of the total. It didn't exist as part of the question. Same with bridge and culvert aid. This is a specific program through statute 86, 82, 80 something. I'm looking at Nathan. I don't recall it off the top of my head, but, um, it's a specific statute that allows for municipalities to request from the highway department to participate in bridge and culvert aid projects. And it's a cost sharing agreement of 50% from the municipality and 50% from the county. If they make the request, we're required to fund it. And then, but that one... And then, but that one only gets levied across those that participate in the program, which is every township in the village of Rochelle. Uh, property tax chargebacks, these go through a process through the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. They give us notice that they're approved, we pay them, and then we can add those to the, um, tax levy. And, um, those only get, uh, apportioned back to the municipality that it occurred in. So if it didn't occur in your municipality, it's not part of your tax bill. And that is outside the levy as well. So the first three are the only ones that are part of that levy limit calculation. The first number, subject to the percentage, the others are exceptions.
How, what, let's say the top line, 3.45. If we'd have gone to our, to the limits of our limit.
We're at the limit.
That's, that's it.
This is the limit. Yes. There is no, um.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Number six, the next Jen, Jen McNally. Portage County Water Resource Specialist, groundwater contamination in Portage County. She came prepared, she's got water.
Don't set a point at me, that's.
Oh, what?
Different computer.
Oh, okay, so you'll advance.
I'm your slide advanced, sir.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, so for those of you who may not know me, my name is Jen McNally. I'm the Portage County Water Resource Specialist. I want to thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'm gonna try and breeze through this presentation as quickly as possible while still giving kind of a high-level overview of groundwater in Portage County and some of the challenges that we're currently facing, um, here in the county. And addressing it with some of the work that we've done to better understand the situation here in Portage County. So I wanted to start this evening, for those of you who may not be aware, uh, this slide shows some of what my position does, um, throughout the county. But really, I wanted to highlight two very unique resources that Portage County has that really most counties in the state do not. Um, and those are the Groundwater Management Plan and the Portage County Citizens Groundwater Advisory Committee. Both of those have been in place since the late 1980s and have been utilized consistently since then. Groundwater and its issues are not new to Portage County, as many of you know, um, and that's why these were put in place. If you are not familiar with either of these resources, I would strongly encourage you, uh, to seek them out and because they provide excellent background information and a lot of insight, um, to the historical context of the situation as well as future plans moving forward. The one that I really wanted to address is the Groundwater Citizens Advisory Committee. This committee is comprised of a representative from every municipality within the county. So 26 citizen representatives come together every other month, uh, to talk about groundwater issues. They are an advisory and recommending committee only, and their sole intent is really to take the groundwater issues that Portage County has, discuss them, put forward recommendations. Some of you may have received, well, all of you should have received a letter in May from, uh, this committee, kind of addressing these issues. They're also the committee that drafts the Groundwater Management Plan, which was, is slated for an update in 2023. Each municipality gets to appoint their representative. So I'm not appointing them, the executive isn't appointing them. Each municipality appoints their own representative so that they're truly representing the viewpoints of their individual municipality. Because of that, it brings together a very diverse group of citizens who are talking about these issues. Um, and it is only one of two in the entire state. Next. So this may seem a little bit elementary as a place to begin, um, but it really is the foundation for any discussion on groundwater. And I want to point out, uh, the groundwater, or the water cycle for one important purpose. You'll see on there, we have precipitation that of course soaks into the ground and becomes what we all eventually know as groundwater, refilling our aquifers. However, in, uh, central Wisconsin and especially in Portage County, our groundwater is very closely tied with our surface water. In fact, when we talk about water resources, we consider them one water resource. Because our groundwater is not stagnant, it does not stay in one place. It is moving from high elevations to low elevations and thus discharging into our surface waters, which are usually the lowest elevations on the landscape. So whatever is happening to our groundwater is also happening to our surface water and vice versa, which makes it an even more complicated, but also more important issue in terms of discussion. Next. So when we talk about, uh, groundwater, specifically in the county, one of the biggest factors that influences our groundwater is the underlying geology or soils, um, of the area. Lucky for us, our, uh, geology is a pretty simple, uh, groundwater system, all things considered. Most of the county, uh, the ones that you see in the orange and yellowish there are what we consider of like unconsolidated deposits. So if you were to take out a slice of the ground, what you would see would be very similar to what's on the right. So you would see the topsoil, you would see a big, in some cases, hundreds of feet of unconsolidated materials, typically sand and gravel in the central sands area, and then you hit bedrock underneath. Groundwater is simply the water that fills those pore spaces between the sand and gravel. That's all it is, there's no underground lakes or rivers or streams. Um, it's just the water that fills all those tiny pore spaces. In most of our county, we have only one unconfined aquifer. So it's just those one area of pore spaces that are filled before you hit the bedrock, which makes it a pretty simple system to understand, um, in terms of that. If you want to click, the northwest portion of the county is a little bit different. Those are those areas in the green that you see up there. In that case, we have a very thin, um, band of unconfined materials and much, much higher, uh, bedrock in those cases, very close to the surface. In fact, it's often so close to the surface, there isn't enough room for an aquifer. So in those cases, um, we are finding our groundwater in the cracks and fractures of the bedrock, which presents its own challenges. Um, little bit more protective of water quality, but harder to come by in terms of water quantity. So we do have two very diverse systems, um, within the county, which is important to take note of. Next. So this is a map of soil susceptibility. And within the county, the potential for soil contamination increases the more susceptible the soil. So we have those unconfined materials, the sand and gravels. They're great for water infiltration, they're great for pumping water out of the ground, they allow for easy access. However, that also means they allow for easy potential contamination, which is why you'll see most of the county covered in red and orange. Those are potentially highly susceptible soils to any source of contamination. If water can get in easily, so can contamination, and it free trap, it travels very freely, um, in those soils as well. There's really nothing to stop it, there's no confining layers, um, in most cases. So there's nothing to keep it in one place. Um, you will see again that northwest corner where the bedrock is much closer to the surface, less contamination susceptibility in that potential area, again, due to the shift in geology. Next. Um, I mentioned the Groundwater Management Plan. The work over the past seven years that I've been in the position as the Water Resource Special, Specialist has largely been driven by the Groundwater Management Plan. The projects that we have put in place, the sampling efforts, everything has been based off of the goals and actions that were identified within that plan. And I thought it was important to put up there the overarching goal, um, that was identified in that Groundwater Management Plan. And so the overarching goal, as you can see, is to maintain and improve groundwater quality and quantity in Portage County, to support the daily living needs of all Portage County residents, a thriving commercial, agricultural, and industrial economy, the quality of life in rural communities, recreational opportunities, tourism, and the health of the groundwater dependent surface waters and their ecosystem. So that's what we're working towards with our management actions, um, in the county. Next. So what do we have for concerns, um, in groundwater quality in Portage County? There's a handful of big ones. Um, there are always new ones and they come out all of the time. So this is by no means a comprehensive list. Uh, Radon is one that we see in certain areas of those, uh, of our county as potentially a concern. However, that's naturally occurring doing, due to the underlying geology. There's not much we can do about that, um, but I did want to identify it as a concern. PIFAs, I will touch on briefly at the end of the presentation, um, just because they're such a big headline, um, in the news and people hear about them an awful lot, so I'll touch on those at the end. Pharmaceuticals, personal care products, and neonicotinoids. Those are new, um, areas of interest and concern. We have only begun sampling for those and identifying potential concerns associated with those. So while we knew, know that there are emerging contaminants that we want to be on the watch for, we don't have a whole lot of information, um, on those, in those specific areas. Herbicides and pesticides actually kind of get lumped in with our nitrates. Our nitrates are a great indicator, um, analyte that are indicative of certain types of land use. And oftentimes where we see elevations in nitrates, we kind of can make the assumption that those herbicides and pesticides are also maybe of concern in those areas. This is an area where we haven't done extensive work and where we should probably be continuing to outlook into the future. Um, we know they're there, and again, this is an ever-changing area too. So contaminants of concern that would have fallen within the herbicides and the pesticides in the 70s and 80s have significantly changed, uh, since then, as new products come on the market and old products are discontinued. So it's a constant game. By far, the biggest one, um, the one that makes the news all the time and that I'm sure all of you have heard about in some way, shape, or form, is nitrate nitrogen. That's the one I'm going to focus most time on this evening, and it's also the area where we've done the most work, um, in the last seven years as well. Next. So why, why are we concerned, um, about nitrates? It is the most common groundwater contaminant, not only in Portage County, but across the entire state of Wisconsin, and I would also argue in the Midwest, um, in most cases. So it has human health impacts. When we tell people to test their water, the two biggest things we want people to test for are bacteria and nitrates on an annual basis because those have the potential impact on human health. And so that's why we're asking people to be on the lookout for those. So the drinking water standard was set, um, at 10 milligrams per liter. When that was set, it was set on something called Blue Baby Syndrome or Methemoglobinemia, which is the ability for blood to absorb and carry oxygen throughout the body. Excess nitrate, um, decreases the abilities, the body's ability to use that oxygen and carry it in the blood. Thus, uh, infants and small children are particularly susceptible, and that's why the drinking water standard was set. It is still a concern, um, it still does occur occasionally. However, one of the things that we have done an excellent job of is education surrounding that particular issue. If you're a new mother, chances are your first one of, your first prenatal appointments, you'll go into your doctor's office and the, one of the first questions they'll ask you is if you are on private well water for this exact reason. Um, there are other health risks, potential health risks associated with this. Um, there are increase of risks of birth defects and miscarriages in women who are pregnant. Increased risk of certain types of cancer, especially colon cancer, and then links to thyroid disease as well. And if we're talking those natural ecosystems, um, elevated nitrogen and nitrates are toxic to eggs and young of amphibians and, uh, fish in natural ecosystems. Next slide. This is not just an us problem in Portage County, it is, um, much larger than us, but we also contribute to the larger, um, issue as well. So where does Portage County rank in the state of Wisconsin? We are one of the top seven counties in the state for the number of private residential wells that exceed the drinking water standard. Thus, the darker color of Portage County in there. We'll talk about why that is a little bit later. But then I also want to point out that what we're doing on our landscape and in our groundwater resources is feeding into a much larger system. So part of the county discharges into the Mississippi River system. Um, that is carried downstream all the way to the Gulf of Mexico, where you may or may not be familiar with Gulf Hypoxia, which is fueled by algal blooms. The primary driving source of that is nitrogen. So elevated levels of, or elevated levels of nitrogen in our groundwater that are feeding into our surface waters, those surface waters are feeding into larger bodies of water and are contributing to this much larger issue. So in a scale of things, it's also important to remember that what we're doing also has impacts out of our, just our immediate vicinity as well. Next. So what do we know about nitrates in Wisconsin or in Portage County? There's a number of different sources of information that we can look at to better understand where we're at, what the issues are. Uh, one of the most consistent ones is of course the Wisconsin Well Water Viewer. This is a public, uh, data viewer that is administered through the Center for Watershed Science and Education at UWSP. It combines data sources from all of those labs that are listed at the bottom of the slide over the last 25 years and then publicly displays them, um, on a different scales, everything from across the state, down to the county, municipality. And the smallest one is the quarter section. These are voluntarily submitted samples to any of those labs. Say a homeowner wants their water tested, they bring it into a state lab, it gets tested, their results get fed into this database. Uh, individual results are not posted in this, but are rather averaged over that quarter section. What it does is it gives us a very useful overview of what water quality is, not only in Portage County, but on a regional scale as well. And it's been one of the most consistent sources of data for us, um, in terms of gauging where are we at, how are things doing? Um, so what you'll see, according to the Well Water Viewer, about 22% of our private residential wells in Portage County exceed the nitrate drinking water standard, meaning they're over 10 milligrams per liter. Ranges, the values in the county range anywhere from non-detectable all the way up to a whopping 254 milligrams per liter, so. Next slide. The one thing that that Wisconsin Well Water Viewer can't do is it can't answer the question, how have things changed over time? Um, it's really a snapshot at any given point in time of both historic and current values. And we really wanted to lay the baseline so that we could ask the question, how have things changed over time? We also wanted an assessment across the entire county at one time during the same time period. So in 2017, it was a project initiated by then-county Executive Patty Dryer to do a countywide sampling effort. Uh, this had been done in other counties across the state and was something that we kind of patterned our sampling off of at the time. Uh, this sampling effort was designed by overlaying a four-square-mile grid across the entire county and randomly choosing one well from each of those four-square-mile areas and collecting a sample so that it gave us a snapshot, um, of water quality. According, this project was just redone in 2022, so we should have results. Analysis is currently ongoing for that project, um, we should have those results by late winter. So according to this, um, sampling effort, 24% of residential wells exceeded that drinking water standard and, uh, limit or values concentrations were anywhere from non-detect up to 44, uh, milligrams per liter in this sampling effort. Next slide. There was an additional project that came out of this, um, since we had these two data sets, they used two very different sampling strategies. We wanted to understand, is the sampling strategy that Portage County chose reflective of the Well Water Viewer, vice versa? Is the data comparable to one another? Or are we picking up very different results, um, based on how we're collecting these samples? It was of interest to us, um, to see if there were more intense sampling efforts that were needed or are we really kind of capturing what we wanted to? So there was actually a statistical analysis done, um, between the two different efforts, um, by a university personnel who looked at both the Well Water Viewer and the survey that was conducted in 2017 and compared those. So these are just the basic stats of our survey using the four-square-mile grid. And then the next slide. Oh, sorry. So these are the basic stats of the Well Water Survey. This is the basic stats of the well database. So this would be the well water viewer that the county, that the university administers. And then you can go to the next slide. All right. And so then this is the final result comparing the two. Essentially what it was is the two are very identical and there's a statistical significance between the two. Meaning that no matter the strategy that we chose, we were finding very similar results, which is actually very reassuring to us. That the method that we put in place is actually capturing some of the same data. That a database of 25 years worth of data is also showing us, we weren't seeing wildly drastic different results between the two. And it gave us confidence in that sampling strategy that we had employed. So that's why I wanted to share those results with you. Okay. The next project that we undertook was in 2018. The county was approached by local citizens who had a concern about well water quality within the village of Nelsonville. When we took a look at their historic data, there was only maybe a dozen historic water samples from within the village. It wasn't enough for us to confidently say, yes, there is an issue, no, there isn't an issue. We didn't know how widespread that issue was. We had anecdotal evidence that suggested there might be a concern. So Gary Garsky, who is the the health officer for Portage County and I wrote a Department of Health Services grant to obtain funding to do a water sampling within the village of Nelsonville. So we tested approximately 60 of 70 some wells agreed to participate in the project. Of the 60 wells that were sampled, 47 of those came back over the drinking water standard of 10 milligrams per liter. You'll see the values, the range of concentrations in there ranged from non detect to 23.7 milligrams per liter at the time of that sampling. And then what we did differently here that we hadn't done before is we wanted to see if we could better understand the potential sources of nitrate contamination. Or those elevated nitrate concentrations within those wells. So we went back to 25 of those wells that tested high and tried to use what's called source testing. So we were testing for different analytes that come from different sources. We tested for pharmaceuticals and personal care products, which are indicative of a source of a septic system. Input into that, they could be contributing to those high nitrate levels. We tested for herbicide breakdown products. And then we also tested for a bovine antibiotic. The results of those showed that eight of those wells that were high in nitrates had a detect for personal care products or pharmaceuticals. 25 of the 25 wells that were sampled had a detect for herbicide breakdown products. And there were no detects for the bovine antibiotic in any of those. So what this is telling us is that there are some wells that are impacted by septic. There are also all of the wells that we tested were impacted by some form of agricultural land use. Because that's where those herbicide breakdown products are used and are coming from. So the county is currently pursuing a series of monitoring wells within the village of Nelsonville. There have been a series of additional questions that have been answered or raised that we don't feel like we can necessarily answer just by testing residential wells. The extent of the contamination, how deep does it go? Is there a safe casing level for future well replacements or new wells that are installed? How long will good quality water last within the village? Those are things that we can't answer by simply sampling just residential wells. So we had a contract last year with REI to develop a series of monitoring wells throughout that village. And we're pursuing currently trying to pursue funding to install those monitoring wells so that we can hopefully answer some of those additional questions within the village. Next. One of the last sources that we rely on are our public drinking water systems. These range from anything from municipal drinking water supplies to our transient non community drinking water systems, which are bars, churches, schools. There's a couple other categories in there of public drinking water systems. All of them have to be routinely sampled at least annually. So this is our one source of data at this point that has been routinely sampled over time. And where we can do a trend assessment on nitrate concentrations. It gives us some idea of how things may or may not be changing in the county when it comes to these nitrate concentrations. So we have 116 public drinking water systems in the county. We are the county with the highest number of public drinking water systems over 10 milligrams per liter in the state of Wisconsin. That's why the glaring red dot there, which I think is important to point out. And it's also one of the reasons why we pursued the state and local fiscal recovery funds this year to help some of these entities. A lot of these are small businesses that are being impacted by this. And have the additional burden of a cost associated with treatment and trying to provide clean drinking water. So in the trend assessment with these that was done on these public drinking water systems. 21% of these systems are showing a statistically significant increase in nitrate concentrations over time. 6% are showing a decrease and 72% are showing no change at all. And I think it's really important not only to note the increase, but also the decrease. For those that are decreasing, we want to understand why are those decreasing? And are those things that we can try and replicate in other areas of the county? So not only important to look at increases and why those potentially might be increasing, also to note the decreases. And even to maintain those changes in the status quo in those public drinking water systems. So why do we have an issue in Portage County? I stole this slide from my colleague Kevin Masark at the university because I think it perfectly wraps up why we are in the situation that we are in. It's a combination of our underlying soils and geology and our land use in the county. Those, they are what they are, and it has brought us to the situation that we are currently in. The interesting caveat to this is our soils and geology also dictate our land use. A lot of the land uses that we have in the county, a lot of the types of agriculture that are wildly successful and are vital to our economic, you know, economics here in the county are here because of the soils that we have. And so it's really important when we have this conversation about these issues to keep that in mind. Going forward, there are things that we can change and there are things that we simply can't. There's not much that we can do about the soils that we were given in this area. Next slide. So a great, oop, actually had you go back one. So this slide does a really nice job of kind of overlaying those two things. So on the base, and I forgive the blurriness of this image, I couldn't get any better quality on this. So the green and the red coloring that you see, Portage County is pulled out on the right hand side of this. The green and red underlying image that you see on there is that soil susceptibility. So green areas not susceptible, red areas are susceptible. You will see kind of a smattering of black and gray in the background. Those are agricultural lands that are in production right now. And then you'll see purple and pink squares. The pink squares are townships that have greater than 20% of their residential wells that exceed the drinking water standard. The purple squares are townships that have between 10 and 20% of their residential wells that exceed the drinking water standard. So it's kind of overlaying that when we talk about land uses, our biggest land use in Portage County at 50% is agricultural land use. That is what it is. We grow a lot of crops in Portage County that are high nitrogen demanding crops. Our sandy soils don't hold on to that nitrogen very well. It flows freely into our groundwater. And the nitrogen cycle, when you talk about the nitrogen cycle just in itself is a very leaky cycle. It doesn't take a whole lot for nitrogen loss to occur. So when we have this conversation, it's about having a conversation about how do we strike a balance with all of these needs? The needs of our agricultural community, the needs of our water resources and natural resources in the county? And how can we make those things work hand in hand? Next slide. With that 2017 study, we also wanted to take a look at a variety of different land uses. And assess those different land uses in terms of relationship to elevated nitrate concentrations. So this was a statistical analysis that was done by the university, looking at different land uses. And whether they had a significant relationship to nitrate concentrations in the county. So the model was used, a statistical model was used to develop these relationships. What the model showed is that almost one third of variability in the nitrate concentrations could be explained through land use. So depending on what type of land use, almost one third of that variability in the nitrate concentrations could be accounted for by the associated land use. There was very strong evidence of a positive relationship between potato vegetable irrigated land. And the way to drain a drink or the way to drain a drink is how quickly that soil drains. Again, that's a kind of also goes hand in hand with how susceptible that soil is. So highly susceptible soils, if we have irrigated vegetable and potato growth, we saw a very strong relationship to elevated nitrate concentrations. A strong evidence of a relationship between those same variables in continuous corn instead of the irrigated potato vegetable. There was a weak relationship to dairy. And we also wanted to take a look at septic systems because those are a known nitrogen source. Septic systems are not designed to remove nutrients, they're designed to kill harmful bacteria that make people sick. Nitrogen flows freely out of them and into our system. And there are concerns in that areas where we have dense septic systems or a lot of septic systems in a small area. We're seeing elevated nitrate concentrations. So we really wanted to take a look, is that something that we're seeing? We didn't see that relationship in this data. It's not because that data, that relationship doesn't exist. There was a flaw in our sampling strategy where we weren't able to capture that. We sampled on that four square mile grid and didn't account for areas where there was denser populations and more septic systems. We just did it uniform across the entire county, which is great when we can account for 50% of a large land use. Not great when we're talking about a small percentage of land uses. So when we redid our sampling in 2022 this past year, we specifically added 150 additional water quality samples. To try and capture those areas where there were denser populations. So we specifically targeted those areas weighted additional samples based on higher populations. So that we could hopefully capture this relationship, this go around in this analysis. So what are we doing as we talk about these issues? And I'm kind of going to move quickly through these next few slides and talking about this. So I talked about our countywide testing program that was redone in 2017, redone in 2022. The same statistical analysis will be done on that new set of data. Additionally, we're hoping with the new data to also develop a specific nitrate susceptibility map for the county. Overlaying all the different land juices, soils, nitrate concentrations. So that that can be a tool for you as decision makers to use. And to understand where might we have the highest potential for nitrate contamination in the county. We're working on establishing that system and monitoring wells within the village of Nelsonville to help determine extent of contamination. And extent of clean water resources. We're continuing our zoning ordinances that deal specifically with water resources, which include our wellhead protection. Well abandonment, manure management and others in the county. Next slide. I routinely host free nitrate screening events throughout the county. I try and do these about six times a year in different locations. These are an opportunity for people to bring me a water sample. I have a very simple nitrate screening kit that I can use to screen their water samples specifically for a nitrate concentration right there on the spot. This allows me to have conversations with local residences about any potential concerns, the need for testing, state programs that might be available. It's a great outreach tool for us to use. And it raises the awareness of potential issues within the county as well. We've seen excellent participation in these. Our town of Stockton went a couple of years ago, we had over 200 people show up in a matter of two hours to have their water samples screened. So we also had the Portage County Water Project. This is the one that I'm sure you've heard lots about, using utilizing the state and local fiscal recovery funds. This was rolled out in August of this year. It has two different parts. One is for private residential well owners where they can get a free water test based on the results of that water test. Then they may qualify for up to $1,500 in reimbursement for a treatment system to treat elevated nitrates. We also have a specific transient non community drinking water source portion of that to help our small businesses who have been impacted by elevated nitrates. And they can receive up to $10,000 for either a treatment system or potentially the installation of a new well. Next slide. We've got fantastic work that is happening within Portage County. A lot of that comes from our farmer led watershed groups of which we have three. Right now, I think we are the county with the most of these groups in the state of Wisconsin. And we are the, one of the, a couple of these groups focused specifically on nitrogen. Which is the first time that that is happening in the state. The Farmers for Tomorrow and the Central Wisconsin Farmers Collaborative. Both are specifically focused around addressing and dealing with nitrogen concerns in the county. These are local producers who are putting practices in place and receiving funds in order to do that. And to get other farmers on board to utilize those practices as well. These have been wildly successful. We have great working relationships with these groups. And I think they really hold a lot of possibility for the future as far as new practices that can be rolled out to do this. And then always our land conservation department are really our boots on the ground that continue to work with our farmers to encourage those lower application rates. In terms of what do we do to solve this issue? The simplest answer is less nitrogen into the system. When you talk about all the caveats and specifics and intricacies of that, that's much harder to do in practice than what it sounds like as a flip statement. But really that's, that's the thing that we're looking for. How do we dial back those sources of nitrogen into the county? And how can we put fewer of those into the system? Okay, next. Okay, then there's also two other efforts that are currently underway. The first of these are the Central Sands Groundwater County Collaborative, which is a six county collaborative in the Central Sands region of Wisconsin. That is working to address this issue on a regional scale. And I have to give props to Barry Jakowski, who during our groundwater management plan writing was actually, he stood up and talked about this effort to work across municipal boundaries. And that this is a regional issue and not something specific to Portage County. And so that specific action item is in our groundwater management plan and is really one of the driving forces behind the forming of this collaboration. So this collaboration originally started with county health departments and county conservation staff working together. It also includes representation from our county board supervisors as well. On how do we address this issue? They received a grant a year ago from the Wisconsin Groundwater Coordinating Council. To assess all of the publicly available neonicotinoid and nitrate data in the central sands. And so they're currently, the researcher that was hired to do that has compiled all of that data into a database, has done the analysis on it. And the report on that data is forthcoming. And then we just recently found out that there is a second project that was just funded. Between the Geological and Natural History Survey and the US Geological Survey. To develop a predictive tool for forecasting nitrate levels in groundwater in the central sands for the next 30 years. So that project will be over the next couple of years in developing that tool that will be specifically aimed at local decision makers in the future. Next slide.
Next slide.
And last but not least, PIFAs. There isn't a whole lot that I can share on this topic, but I always think it's important to share what we do know. So, PIFAs are a class of thousands, upon thousands of synthetic and man-made materials that have been in use since the 1950s. PIFAs are found in just about everything. So you are constantly exposed to PIFAs. The ones that get the most press are, of course, like the firefighting foams that are used in industrial training facilities and at airports. That's where the big news usually happens, but they are literally in non-stick bakeware, water repellent clothes, you name it, it has PIFAs. So, just this year, the Wisconsin DNR set a drinking water standard of 70 parts per trillion for PIFAs and PFOS. For each of those individually or combined, those are just a couple of the thousands of PIFAs. They haven't set standards for all of them. Ironically, the same day the DNR approved those standards, EPA changed their health advisory standards. So, EPA's were set at that 70 trillion. They changed them to health advisory of, it should be 0.004 parts per trillion for PFOA, and 0.02 parts per trillion for PFOS. Interestingly enough, those health advisory levels are currently below any detection limit possible in any lab. So it's virtually a non-detect at this point, is what those were set at. So, DNR initiated a voluntary sampling program for municipal water supplies in the state. Stevens Point, Plover, Whiting, and the village of Amherst all conducted voluntary sampling within this last year. Stevens Point, Whiting, and Plover all had detects for at least one PFA, PIFAs, but they were well, well, well below that standard. They were above the health advisory levels, which are non-detect. Obviously, if we're detecting something, they're above those health advisory standards. And then, DNR just implemented a statewide private well sampling program within the past six months. Very similar to our grid, but across the entire state of Wisconsin, six wells in Portage County were sampled as part of that. All of them had detects for at least one PIFAs compound, but none were at the levels of health concerns. And that is really the only PIFAs data that we have in the county. So, reassuring, we don't have any large sources that we're aware of, that would immediately raise red flags, but it is something that's on our radar and that we are watching for going into the future. And with that, that is all I have, and that's my contact information.
Anybody have any questions for Jen? You must cover it all, Jen.
I tell ya.
And you flew through it, so take a breath.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get there. I know there's a land and committee meeting after this that's on hold until we're done, so.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jen.
My door is always open. If you have any questions or want any additional information, please, please, please reach out to me. I am more than happy to share those resources with you at any time.
Thank you, Jen.
Yep. This is, next item is public notice. Members of the public who wish to address county board on specific agenda items must register their request this time with such reasonable control. Committee Chair Setforth and Roberts, anybody have any comments from the public? We always have this on here, so it's still on here. Mr. Reeser?
Should I cut off the mic?
Yep, three minutes.
So a very quick comment and a question. So I'd like to thank Jen for an absolutely stellar presentation on this. I think we'd been waiting a long time in the county to get kind of a state of groundwater talk, and she nailed it. My question really is for the board as a whole, and also to every member here who is a new member. Shortly before you were seated, this board took a vote. So in the face of having absolutely the highest number of contaminated public drinking wells in the state, and having the fastest increase of contamination of public drinking wells in the state, we actually voted to roll back, substantially roll back, the protections under the wellhead protection zones. We rolled back the language, and we rolled back the maps. We rolled them back to 1990. And so I would like to ask the board as a whole, how are we going to correct this? How do we square rolling back the protection of groundwater in Portage County with the fact that we are actually the worst in the state for contaminated public drinking wells? Thank you. Anybody else? With that, we are adjourned.